Do you have the motion or return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
I need a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered. A motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
There were three actions from closed session. Ms. Bonds?
I move that we deny religious exemption for Student A.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Ms. Franklin?
I move that we expel Student B from Montgomery County Schools.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Lyons?
I move that we expel Student C from Montgomery County Public Schools.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, the regular scheduled meeting, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the school board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes have passed. And I have five people who have signed up and the first speaker will be Matthew Fentress.
Good evening. Matthew Fentress, 395 Summit Ridge Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm a qualified teacher. I love my job and the students I teach. I look forward each day to helping my students rise up to their highest potential. I work diligently every day for their betterment, only to repeatedly see the betterment of my own family decline due to financial stresses. Education in our schools are under attack. I appreciate and agree with Ms. Blackburn's article in the Renwick Times a couple of weeks ago. Richmond is often to blame. In 1992, I watched an HBO movie called Educating Peter. MCBS became the special education beacon for others to follow the inclusion policy. I watched it, thinking how special Montgomery County Public Schools must be. Over 20 years later, I am fortunate enough to be a teacher in Montgomery County. We have become a county of buildings first, programs second, and educators last. What if Montgomery County again became the lighthouse for others to follow? Let's do what's right and lift up all of Montgomery County school employees above their economic drowning. Over the past 10 years, we have watched educators deal with the grief from shootings like Sandy Hook event in Connecticut, as well as the violence in our own backyard. The demands and expectations put upon teachers have increased as our pay has become stagnant. I maintained jobs in many fields before, yet teaching is the only job in which I recall being evaluated, not for a raise in mind, but evaluated simply by allowing me to just maintain my job. I once got paid more to put a roof on a home than I do now laying down the foundation for the hundreds of children I have taught over the years. There are coworkers that have half the experience, but due to no step increases, make the same as me. I am making less than I made in 2008. Contributing more to my VRS, no cost of living increases for years, and higher health insurance costs has led my family to cut many things that the students I teach have the privilege of having. We have cut back on our retirement, our children's college funds, what we contribute to church and other charities, holidays and birthdays gifts, not as much. Improvements to our home have to wait. Cell phone, I don't have one. And family vacations, haven't had one in years. We have extended our student loan debt. I am not the exception. These are hardships felt by all school personnel. I cannot describe the school building I went to as a child or the posters on the walls of that building, but I remember Ms. Linderberg. She made a difference in my life. Montgomery County employs more than 1,600 staff members. They, not the buildings and programs, make a difference in children's lives. We want someone to fight for us and our families. If not now, when? If not you, who?
Mr. Fentress?
I am not asking for more than I need. I am not asking for more than I deserve. I am asking enough to survive.
Mr. Fentress, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Crystal Fentress. Kim Dickerson will be next after that.
Good evening, respected school board members. I'm Crystal Fentress. I live at 395 Summit Ridge Road. I'm a preschool teacher at Christiansburg Primary. I understand that balancing the budget must be a tiresome process as well as an exhausting one. However, I too find myself in a tiresome and exhausting cycle. I am exhausted. I'm exhausted from having to work two jobs to make ends meet. I'm exhausted from working eight to 10-hour days with a 20-minute lunch break and little planning time. I'm exhausted from completing assessments and take applications after putting my own children to bed. And I'm tired. I'm tired of telling my children, "I'm sorry we can't afford that this week." I'm tired of telling my friends, "I'm sorry we can't join you. We have two more weeks until payday." And I'm tired of saying to my husband, "I'm sorry didn't get that errand ran. The place closed before I finished my second job of tutoring after school." I'm tired and I'm exhausted. And I'm tired and I'm exhausted from having to choose dental insurance over family vacations. And I'm tired and I'm exhausted from the burden of the budget crisis coming down again on the backs of teachers and staff. So here I stand again, swallowing my pride to tell my story of financial woe in front of the general public, just so I can have a shot at a chance that our raise will not once again be cut. Yet, I'll wake up in the morning, get my children ready for school, wish my husband a great day with his students. I'll walk into Christiansburg Primary with my head held high and a smile on my face, and I'll be there to do the best by my students because they're worth it. I'm just hoping that this is the year that you decide I'm worth it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kim Dickerson, followed by Kelly Pleasant.
Kim Dickerson, Christiansburg. When I teach in Blacksburg. $2,145.02 is what I bring home each month. My sixth year in the classroom and not much has changed with what I'm bringing home. Unfortunately, what I'm spending continues to increase. As a single female who's determined to take care of herself, I manage my money, what money I do have, to the best of my abilities. I own my own home, which nearly half of my income goes towards. I've paid my car, which needs upkeep. I pay my student loans for undergrad and graduate school. I pay my electric, phone, gas, water, and let us not forget internet because that's a necessity to be able to answer parent emails in a timely fashion. And hopefully, I have enough money left over to feed myself and purchase gas in order to get to and from work. Heaven forbid I ever get sick or have to deal with an emergency. Believe it or not, I've even tried to plan for my future by setting up an additional retirement plan because of the state the VRS is in, not to mention that I'm not fully vested because of the time in which I was hired. Clearly, one can see that a budget with little money is difficult. I know you're all aware of this. One positive part of working in Montgomery County is our insurance. It's one of the last incentives we have left to encourage young teachers to apply in our county. My second job, because yes, the first one isn't enough to foot the bill, so to speak, allows me to work with young teachers at Radford University. Last night, in my class with nine seniors who are busy applying for jobs, they assured me that not one of them would be applying in Montgomery County. When I asked why, even though I knew, everyone in unison replied, "salary." Montgomery County is going to start losing highly qualified teachers because of salary alone. I encourage you to take a look at other options before you consider making further cuts to teachers. For once, it's time for someone other than teachers to feel the burden of a budget crunch. Thank you.
Kelly Pleasant is next, followed by Mark Chabaka.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Staton, I am Kelly Pleasant and I live at 2737 Old Fort Road in Blacksburg. I wish that cutting $3 million from a public school budget was just an April Fool's hoax, and I'm sure you do too. There is nothing easy about budget cuts, particularly when it comes to children and their futures. I understand that. The members of the Montgomery County Education Association, of which I serve as president, they understand it too. You put forth a needs-based budget, and we could not generate the necessary support to fund it, not from the state, and this year, not from the county either. I hope to see this room overflowing with your employees, members of the public, in support of public education and educators in Montgomery County. Perhaps a continued loss of positions, stagnant salaries with decreasing take-home pay, and slowly eroding benefits don't move people to speak anymore. They certainly speak to me. Maybe there's become a certain resignation among employees to the budget process, a belief that nothing we can say will impact it. We've gotten somehow used to the potential of eliminating positions. Numbers like 22 and 33 employees lost are batted around like nobody's going to notice the loss. It can be done without impacting teaching and learning, people think. Pretty soon, these attrition numbers are going to reach triple digits. And believe me, they are taking a toll on students and teachers. I wish the necessity for any more cuts could be eliminated just magically, but it seems that those days are in the past or still in the future. So at first glance, here are some budget items that might need to be explored. If we cannot afford to replace or adequately manage our aging bus fleet, maybe we need to take another look at our field trip budget. We have a highly qualified team of gifted teachers, AP offerings, and dual enrollment at community colleges. Perhaps we need to look at the feasibility of the future funding of governor's school. We need adequate cleaning supplies for healthy buildings, but the supply budget could be cut by requesting reams of copy paper on supply list and utilizing old-school lined paper. We teachers know it's a penny a pack at Staples. Students could use more practice on note-taking anyway, and we could stop sending multiple copies of the same things home, raising accountability and promoting responsibility at the same time. So I'm here to ask you tonight to carefully come through the budget and look for places that don't involve employee cuts. I know there aren't easy fixes and that it takes a lot of small changes to add up to 3.9 million, but they do add up. Your employees will appreciate any attempt by this board to cut something besides us. Thank you.
Hello. Mark Chabaka, 17 Montgomery Street in Blacksburg. So I wanted to hit on several points here, some of them coming from a couple of weeks ago, the discussion that you guys had after that large public session. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys all for, you always do such a good job at listening to everybody and weighing things. And I really felt, and talking with a lot of different people, I think a lot of people felt like you guys were really hearing what the community was saying. And I think as elected members of the board, I think, you know, we really appreciate that. And it's not something that we take for granted. So I appreciate that you were committing not to close the schools, and not just because it was an emotional decision, but also because there's a lot of data that indicates it's probably not going to save money and in fact, probably going to make things worse. Which brings me to the next topic, which is, you know, when we talk about these other issues, salaries and healthcare, you know, I've been looking at this budget for a little while and for a few years in the cycle, and these things comprise a gigantic part of this budget. And, you know, this year alone, we had, what, a million-dollar increase, I think, in the healthcare costs. So I think when we make decisions about anything, but especially about these types of things that add millions of dollars to the budget, that we really do need to justify it with better data and numbers, or at least communicate those data and numbers. I hear about attrition. I've never seen advertised what those attrition rates are, how they compare to other counties, and that kind of a thing. I think that could really help us to make it, maybe make the decisions, the timing of the decisions better and maybe plan better in the future. I have said before that this is, that we're really in a political, this is kind of a political problem. I mean, I feel for the teachers that spoke tonight. I'm supportive. You put it to a vote, increase my taxes, I'll do it, I'll pay. But there's other ways that we have to do it, I think, realistically, and I think that we need to look at those. One idea I had was looking at maybe part-time staff. We happen to live in a place where, with Virginia Tech being there, that there's a lot of spouses that maybe would want to work part-time and not full-time, perhaps by not offering those people healthcare benefits, or, you know, we could maybe cut that back. I don't know. I'm just asking for, if we could please use data and show data to justify some of these huge decisions that we're saying that we have to make. And then, in the last 20 seconds that I have here, I did want to make one point, at the risk of offending any staff members. It came up about the Blacksburg Middle School site, and I just want to say that it's important to properly develop that site because Virginia Tech is the economic engine in the area. And I think that properly developing the middle school property isn't just a town of Blacksburg concern, it's a concern for everybody, and it generates revenue year after year. Thank you.
That's all who have signed up. If there's anyone else who cares to speak, would you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. Board, my name is Connie Froggett. I live at 1751 Brush Mountain Creek Road in Montgomery County. I've spoken to you many times before. I was here two weeks ago and witnessed sort of the spectacle of the power of public address and the influence it can have. I've been here many times over the past four years and myself spoken to issues that were important to me, as the speakers did last week and have done many times before. You want to fill a room, you just bring up closing schools, cutting athletics, outsourcing, just to name a few. But it seems like when the nights come, when it's time to talk about our greatest resource, our teachers, you face a practically empty room, and somebody needs to speak up for them as well. They are our greatest resource, and they do seem to be what we always end up coming back to when we deal with those unpopular issues, and we don't want to deal with those unpopular issues. But I think it's time we started looking at other things. Why is there no cuts at all to central staff in this budget? Why isn't there more cuts to athletics? Why is it always education and our staff and our teachers that we keep coming back to for these major cuts? And looking at your options, granted, they're terrible. You know, you can either raise PTR and risk losing people, or you can not give a raise and risk losing people. Either way, I think you're going to lose valuable staff, teachers, employees. I know you have a very hard decision ahead of you, and just keep in mind, again, people are your most valuable resource. They are the ones that reach these students. They need some consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who cares to speak?
My name is Tacya Piza. I'm a teacher in the county. I live in Blacksburg, and I'm an ESL teacher, so I'm at many different schools. I didn't write anything or prepare anything, but I just feel compelled to speak. As I drive my son to high school every morning, as I go to school every morning, I look at the roads packed with people going to school, coming from school, school buses. Our entire days and lives and years are filled with school. School encompasses our lives for probably most of our life, and when you drop off your kids at school, who are they with? Us. They're with us for years, for hours, and we are responsible for so much, and we take it seriously, and we care. And I just would like for someone to care about us. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to speak?
My name is John Gill. I live at 2037 Hupfield Road in Pilot. I was at your recent special session on the budget. What I gained from your meeting is that you are more concerned with the teachers getting raises or having their healthcare taken care of or their retirement being funded than you are about the loss and the cutting of student programs. Several items related to teachers were rejected by your board at that time, but the students' cuts were not. Two schools, Hardy Avenue and Bellevue, have 250 students each. Why were these both not considered during your discussion for closure? I only heard the board mention Hardy Avenue and Shawsville. Why did you not include all the necessary closures? With $300,000 for each one of those schools, that's almost a million dollars a year. Over three years, $3 million. You need to be looking at cutting costs. In your healthcare budget, you did not mention that you are now giving bus drivers $400 to $500 a month for their healthcare. Is that what our million-dollar increase in healthcare is coming from, or at least a good portion of it? At some board meeting, I heard the words, "it's all relative." What is relative about the first year's teacher's basic salary, $37,000 with a total pay and benefit package of over $50,000? To the relativity of the average pay of the Montgomery County citizen who are taxed to pay their relative payments, perhaps it is relative to northern Virginia with average income twice that of Montgomery County, but is relatively dwarfed by meager, but it's relatively dwarfed my meager income. What is the relativity of the brick-and-mortar monuments built at schools to 71% of the total tax budget? David Cott, the CEO of Huntingwell Corporation, one of the most successful corporations in America, in a recent interview on 27 March, made a few observations about the American school systems. Schools do not teach the basic manufacturing school that this nation needs, and this nation's educational system is designed by elitist. This nation is now 17th in the world in mathematics, outdone by China, Korea, Singapore, and Hong Kong. To even say that we have a manufacturing base or that school system is educating our students in manufacturing is beyond outright irrational thought. Teachers and the school board need to look at outside their box and get priorities in order and cut real waste in your system. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to speak? Standing no one, public address is closed. Thank you. Consent items. If there's nothing to pull from consent agenda, then we'll consider consent items approved. Anyone care to pull anything? Okay. Personnel report. Do I have a motion to adopt the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Pay the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Any discussion reference to the bills? All those in favor, raise your hand by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Superintendent, recommendations, reports, and announcements. We now move to Superintendent Dr. Staton.
Thank you, Ms. Ivers, and good evening again to board members. The first item under the superintendent's report is the grant proposal, Montgomery County Prevention Partners Drug-Free Community Project. On behalf of the Montgomery County Prevention Partners, New River Valley Community Services has applied for a drug-free community support program grant in the amount of $124,965 per year for five years. These grants are offered by the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy in cooperation with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. The Montgomery County Prevention Partners Coalition applied for this grant last year with the Montgomery County Public Schools as the fiscal agent, but was not funded at that time. The goals of the Montgomery County Prevention Partners Coalition are to establish and strengthen the community collaboration in support of local efforts to prevent youth substance use. So, on behalf of the superintendent, I recommend approval for this grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? I have a question. Is there any funding that we need to put forth on this at all?
Laura, I actually come and answer any questions on this grant, please.
No, all our contributions are in kind. We would have, we've got 5% of the time of the supervisor's student services to work on some things that dovetail that are already part of his job, and 5% of the time of the supervisor of social sciences and character education. And there's some time for, we've got our student assistants, our SAP teams at the middle and high schools that already meet and work, so we'd be providing some training to them as part of this grant, and that time is included, but it's time that they're already spending as part of their duties.
And the personnel who trains them are our people?
Some of the training would be provided by New River Valley Community Services people. Jason Garrettson may provide some of their training. That's already part of his job description to work with those teams at our schools.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Ivers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The second item, Special Education Annual Plan for the 2014-15 is for your information. The Special Education Annual Plan and Report 2014-15 has been provided to the board members for review. The Special Education Annual Plan is a state-mandated document which provides supportive information regarding how Montgomery County Public Schools implements state special education regulations. It is not designed to include information related to the methods or strategies for program delivery. Action on this item is scheduled for April 15, 2014.
Thank you, Dr. Staton, Mr. Ivers, and members of the board. You do have in your packet the Special Education Annual Plan. If you just want to take a second and look through certain pages of the plan, I'll be glad to explain what is included. Under the page one and two, those are the policy statements that we are required to provide as part of the federal and state regulations. The way that we implement these policies is in a great deal of detail outlined in our handbook that's posted on our website, and also, paper copies are in schools and our parent resource center. The next session, our submission statement, includes all of the assurances that are required in order to receive and use federal funds, which are requested within this document as well. The next section is on any barriers with Title II regulations. We need to address any equity issues that we may have for teachers, students, or parents. We currently have no barriers in those areas. There is equal access and opportunity. We do have an interagency agreement with our local and regional jail in Montgomery County. For any individual who is incarcerated there, if they want, if they are under the age of 22 and request a special education evaluation for a possible disability, we do provide those evaluation services for inmates. If they do have a documented disability, had an IEP in school, and are under the age of 22, we provide educational services to them if they request that at the jail site through homebound teachers. We are reimbursed by the state for all of those costs. The implementation plan basically describes what we did to implement our 2012 and 13 plan. There's not a lot of information there because they only allow so much in the box to be included. included. The maintenance of effort, according to the federal law, we are required to document our maintenance of effort obligation. Basically, that means that school, our Montgomery County Public Schools spends at least the same amount of local or local plus state dollars for a current school year as we did the previous year. You can't, what they call, supplant federal monies for local or state funds that have already been expended for students with disabilities in the division during the previous year. The budget categories that you will see-
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
On that page, it said local, down here, $6,198, and then over, local plus state, it's $9,745. Is that correct?
That was developed by Katie Miano from our finance department, from records that she has to provide to the state.
So my point is that the state is only giving us one-third of that amount? Is that correct? Approximately?
Yes. That would be correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, this is the specific funds for students with disabilities. There are also funds that come through for average daily membership and other things for students with disabilities, as with students without disabilities. These are the additional funds that are provided. We are not required in Montgomery County to do set aside funds because we are not disproportionate in our services to students, and we've not been identified by the state as a school division that either over identifies or under identifies students with disabilities. So, we are not required to set aside part of our federal money for that category. We are required to provide educational services or evaluations for students with documented disabilities who attend private day schools or who are homeschooled. We don't serve those students through an IEP, but we serve those students through something called a home plan, a service plan. And within the context of the annual plan, we do set aside a proportionate per student amount for those individuals based on what we are allotted for our entire special population. And we provide consultative services to private school teachers, to parents, for students. We give information on interventions, appropriate strategies, methodologies. We also provide, cover the cost for any therapy services that students who attend private schools or who are homeschooled with an identified disability might need. That would include physical therapy, speech therapy, or occupational therapy. We have a description with our federal flow-through money as to the positions that we cover through that funding. In the past, we've had other budget categories within this item that had to do with materials and supplies, adaptive equipment, but basically now this budget is totally for staffing for special education teachers and/or instructional assistants. And that would be the budget for 1 million, approximately $1,700,000. The last budget describes our federal flow-through money for preschool-aged children, ages two through five, and we, it's about $50,000, and we do provide, use that money for instructional assistants who work directly with preschool students with disabilities who have IEPs. So you can see that our federal funds are basically used to cover staff costs and working with children with disabilities.
I wonder if things have changed. This was years ago, but I was an administrator in a school, and we had a fire setter, and we couldn't accommodate him. Obviously, we had to send him to, I think we sent him to Ohio. I believe we had to foot that complete bill. Is that true still today here?
No, it's not. In the past, we used to pay those costs for students who were sent to residential facilities for education, and we would be reimbursed a portion of that cost from the Department of Ed. There's now something called the Comprehensive Management Team for the county, and the funds for educational placements, placements through social services, mental health services, and so forth, are all included in those community-based funds. They come directly from the state. The FAPS team monitors those funds and approves the use of those funds. So we no longer pay costs for private day school or residential schools.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina, our Director of Special Education. And the third item, Virginia Board, the Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. Annually, the Virginia School Board Association publishes a Business Honor Roll. This year, Montgomery County Public Schools nominates New River Engraving for placement on the Business Honor Roll list for their support of educational opportunities throughout Montgomery County and for their support of our Support Staff Employee of the Year. On behalf of Ms. Blackburn, I recommend you approve the BSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution.
Do I hear a motion to approve the BSBA Honor Roll Resolution? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's passed. Motion carried.
Okay. This fourth item brings us back to the budget. Since our last meeting, the General Assembly convened on March 24, 2014, to consider and adopt the fiscal year 2014 caboose budget and the 2014-2016 biennial budget. House Bill 5001, or 5001, the caboose budget, was passed by the General Assembly and now goes to the governor. The governor has the option to amend or veto this budget. The biennial budget is still under consideration. The governor has also proposed his budget, which includes a pay increase for educators and support staff. However, the pay increases will not go into effect until spring 2015 if it does pass. Now, just to recap a little bit, the board has taken a firm position against school closures. As a result, this option has been removed as a possibility. Over the past several weeks, the board members have inquired about a variety of potential areas of cost savings. Those inquiries and responses have been provided to you in a separate board update for your review. You have asked about the increase of PTR and what those cost savings would mean to school programs. Other areas of cost saving have been also addressed such as reducing or eliminating field trips, pay-to-play athletic programs, and reducing overall travel expenditures over the past five years. Staff has provided you with a comprehensive list of all the suggestions for budget reductions over the past five years. And that list is very, very comprehensive. At this time, we are still facing a $3.9 million shortfall, which requires some tough decisions. With all this in mind, the superintendent has decided to bring back to the board the original reductions list presented during the March 13, 2014 special session meeting of the board. Therefore, I am presenting to you on behalf of the superintendent the reduction list that appears on the screen. As we move forward, we will seek guidance from the board tonight. The superintendent remains consistent with her recommendation to the board. Unless specific requests are made, the same recommendations will be brought back. In order for the staff to bring a good set of information to your meetings on April 15 and April 24, 2014, we need to know your level of interest in increasing PTR, the Retirement Incentive Program, and your level of priority regarding potential salary increases for employees. Receiving direction in these areas is considered critical as we move forward towards realizing the needed cuts to meet the $3.9 million shortfall. The staff and I are here to answer any questions you have as you deliberate on this budget
I sent an email out to each one of you this afternoon indicating that I would like you to bring to the table the list of adjustments, cuts, that you would make, and also indicated that we would go around the table and share that information.
One of the things that I would like for us to possibly look at, obviously, one of the big areas that we could save some money on, based upon the superintendent's recommendations, are the salary increases. Is there a way for us to possibly do, take half that money and give a salary increase halfway through the year, and then making up that difference that we would, you know, if it's half of $2.3 million, make that up in increasing PTR in certain places? Just a suggestion that I want to make, is there some kind of formula we could look at that would make that a feasible possibility? So at least we're giving some salary increase, even if it is just half the year, and then making that a combination of increasing some PTRs. Along with that, I have a question about that. You know, our PTRs can be increased some through attrition, so if we could have some information just about what is our average turnover on a yearly basis between non-renewing contracts, retirements, transfers to other districts? What are those numbers in general that may help us so that we're not necessarily letting teachers go, but we're just not replacing some of those teachers to get the PTR down?
Let me ask you a question about your first question. Clarification, you're asking if we can give teachers the suggested raise by the superintendent for half a year?
Yeah, well, she's suggested that we not do the 2.8% increase for salaries, and that would save us $2.3 million.
But you're saying-
What I'm saying is-
-the 2.8 for half a year.
Yeah, let's have that, and then take the other 2 point, you know, whatever it is, $1.2 million, $1.15 million, and find, and make that difference up by perhaps increasing PTRs in such a way that we could save that amount of money. It seems like to me, a lot of the suggestions that have been brought forth, especially by us on the board, have been either salary, not giving the salary increases, or increasing PTRs. And so my suggestion is, is there some way we could combine those two and still give some type of increase halfway through the year?
Let me just say, and I may need help over there. You want the raise for half a year, and then the second half of your PTR raised, which means we would have to eliminate teachers. And I don't know if we can do that once we have a contract signed. Am I-
No, I'm not saying-
Joe, would you address this, please?
I'm saying adjusting the PTRs now. As we go into this coming year, we adjust the PTR. As they go up, we don't have as many teachers coming back, but halfway through the year, we're able to give an increase in salary.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyons, contracts are set at the beginning of the year. One of the suggestions that I hear you saying is halfway through the year, increase the salary. Well, that would require us to reissue contracts for a new amount. One of the suggestions I hear you saying is give half that amount, and we could do that at the beginning and run it all year, and then the other half is the PTR.
Okay.
It would have to run all year, otherwise you'd have to recalculate-
Okay.
-all those contracts again.
Okay. There's not, it can be written-
That contract would only be able to run for six months, is what you're saying.
It's problematic at best.
Exactly.
So there's no way we could write a contract that would say halfway through the year, you're going to get this increase?
No, sir.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, but I can investigate that. I've never done anything like that.
Look, to me, it's just a suggestion because it is, I mean, really, we're boiling down to this point where PTRs are increasing more than likely, or we're not going to be able to give a raise. And so my suggestion is, let's combine to try to lessen the impact on both.
Yes.
Joe, wouldn't that cause a problem with raising the PTR? Automatically, we're going to have some teachers who are going to-
Once the year starts, it's very difficult to change the PTR. I mean, you'd have to start the year that way. You could take care of some through attrition, but if you think about the elementary classes, if a teacher leaves halfway through the year, that would be a lot of turmoil within the building.
I'm not suggesting raising PTRs midway through the year. I'm suggesting raising PTRs now.
Yes, sir.
Coming into this school year, and then the savings that we get from that, having that between those two-
Sure.
...budget numbers.
Might I suggest that when you're talking about changing the salary mid-year, you could do the same by cutting the 2.8 to 1.4?
That's the same thing you're saying.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, and then taking up the other, the amount that we still need to save in the $3.9 million total in PTR adjustment.
Right, and that would avoid mid-year contracts completely.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That is possible.
Okay.
Well, I have a-
Hold on. Did you want to address what he's already?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
But a little bit more. I'm totally in support of salary enhancements, and so I would like to see that not on the reduction list and the full amount. I think, I mean, I don't believe that we will be able to not do something that will affect the teachers to make that salary enhancement happen, because we will do, you know, raising the PTR, if we do that, that affects the teachers. But I think the salary enhancement is a must, and I want to find a way to do that, and do what we're saying was the full amount, at least attempt to do that. And my, on my list here, or whatever you want to call it, is that it has to be something where the general public feels it this time. In the last two years that I've been on this board, the only time they've really felt it is when their bus stop changed, and that was a $50,000 cut that we made. Or if their school was possible was closing, that's when they felt it. But all the other things that we've done, the teachers have felt, but the general public has not. And this 20% reduction with academic and athletic stipends, at least the proposed change on how that would happen, that is eliminating three programs at the middle school level, and I will not support changing something at the middle school level again, and those were three academic programs at the middle school level nonetheless. So, that number needs to either increase to cause more things to be eliminated, or somehow have more programs affected other than those three. And I am totally in support in increasing the field trip budget reduction, the supply list. I am in support of, on the other list that we have where it has our budget, putting on this list the math coaches, the math enhancements, the website. We just, we can't do those kinds of things right now if we're having to cut other things. And I just, I think that's, needs to be on here. I don't know what other people's thoughts are. And finally, I do believe on this list that the central office needs to be there somewhere. It's not been there the last three years that I've been here, at least in a way that I see it. Maybe it has, but I need to see the details for that. I believe that's important when the teachers are continuing to feel the pain. You know, I don't have my numbers adding up to figuring out that 3.9, but I, these are my thoughts on what I feel is priority to be put back on that list.
Thank you. I want to go back over here, and are you finished, Mr. Lyons?
For now, yes.
Okay. Ms. Franklin?
Okay. Well, I'll just tell you, because there's so many emails flying around back and forth, I- over this budget, I stopped looking at it, because I just don't think those discussions need to be happening through an email, they need to be happening here at this table. I thank all the teachers who came out, because you are absolutely right. You all deserve what you deserve. So I am not going to be voting for a budget that cuts this salary. I am not going to be voting for PTR being raised, because we have raised it and raised it, one student, one student, one student. And like was said tonight, the word attrition gets thrown around like, oh, it doesn't mean anything. You're losing bodies. And we keep losing bodies through attrition, thinking, oh, that's okay, but it's not. You may as well go ahead and lay someone off, because it's the same effect. So I wish we would just stop throwing that around like it doesn't matter. It does. We're still losing bodies, which affects the classroom, the teachers, and no one keeps talking about the children. No one's talking about how these things affect the children. And when those PTRs go up, and teachers aren't being paid, and their health insurance, they're having to pay more for the same thing that they're getting now, I won't vote for that. I won't. You know, this, at some point, yeah, it's going to have to hurt, so there's some things that I would not have voted for before, like reducing the stipends for athletic and academics. I can do that this year, because there's some things that we have to do, and that is pay our teachers, make sure they have health insurance, and make sure that we have enough of them to teach our children. So the governor's school, the student enrollment, college application, you know, there's several things in there, and I, like Sarah, I want to know what's happening at the central office. Okay? I want to know what we're doing there to tighten the belt. And there's no way that we can not do those capital issues. They may not be part of our budget, but I'm not going to vote for funding not to repair the roofs, buses. No, not going to do it. And with the new schools and the older schools, we have got to make sure they're being kept clean. You know, every one of our employees are important to me, whether they're feeding our children, delivering our children, teaching our children, cleaning our buildings, and we need to make sure we're taking care of them.
Thank you.
Want me to go?
Yes, please.
Yes. I will definitely like to keep the salary increase. I'm okay with the PTR. I know it's not the best solution, but if we need to raise one PTR to gain 1.4 million, let's say, you know, so it will go toward the 2.8% increase for salary, I am for it. I think keeping teachers happy is really crucial right now than, you know, having one more student, you know, even though that, of course, affects the attrition and number of teachers in our buildings too. But if we have to save from somewhere to keep that salary increase, I'm okay with PTR increase. No problem with, I think, at this time, cutting field trips, and I think athletic stipends and academic stipends, 20%, even maybe more if needed, as long as it is equally distributed between athletics and academics. Let's see, I would like to see what's going on in central office, whether we'll save it on a personnel, or paper, or ink, or the heat, or air condition. We have to really look into how we can save money, so that will be in our lists. I think that's pretty much it, what I would like to say.
Very good.
And of course, I mean, it's not a magical number to come up with that 3.9, however way you do, it's hard to reach, but hopefully, we'll be able to figure out.
Ms. Barnes?
Okay, I don't want to get on a soapbox, but, you know, we feel your pain, who spoke about the six years. I make what you make, and I've been cutting here 30 years, so, you know, and as far as the insurance, I hear that too, but, you know, my household insurance went up to $1,000 a month this year with the new insurance things that we're dealing with. So I hear you, I live in your world. I had to camp at the lake last year for a vacation, so I feel your pain, and I'm not a camper. It don't do well for me, so my 14-year-old could have a vacation. So, you know, when we're making these decisions, it's not because we're against anybody, and I just feel like I have to say that, because that's how I feel, that we're being thrown those, or I feel that I'm being thrown those comments, when that's not how I feel. So with that being said, I just kind of wanted to clear the air on that situation. I know what you're living with, because I live with it. And I did feel the pain of the tax increases, and I do think Montgomery County citizens did feel that pain. And, you know, if we give a raise, and it increases taxes, who gets the raise? Where's, I mean, you know, I am most definitely in support of giving a raise when we can. And if we can figure out a way to give half and do the PTR half, great. I do think there's some other ideas. Someone mentioned with the paper and the rooms, I agree. There is stacks of copies every day that comes home with copied paper from, you know, cut that out. I'm sure that my 14-year-old daughter got much more out of her field trip last week with floriculture than I'll ever get from going to a VSBA conference. And some of the seasoned teachers and educators, I'm sure, going one year without a developmental program trip, you're going to be okay. And I can't help but want to see more travel budget cut. Why don't we go one year, and nobody go anywhere, and take that travel money? I mean, I'm talking countywide. Think how much money that would be. We have technology, we have internet, we have so many things that can teach as far as program development. I think we all could go a year without that. And how much money would that save us, other than 10%? I would rather see more money took out of that than I would affect field trips, because that not only is students going places, that's our bands taking trips, marching in parades that do make a difference in their lives. I don't know. I just don't know. I mean, the rest of it, I'm okay with, and like I said, if we can figure out a way to do a raise, I'm all for it. I just don't see how it's going to happen. And if we can do it a split way, great. But I would like to see some, and even though I'm for athletics, I'm okay for the stipends to be, as long as we don't put a pay-for-play, because I do think that affects there again. But, you know, like I said, the travel budget, cut it all out.
And that's $100,000, if it's all?
Still $100,000. Dollars make, you know, I mean-
Ms. Woolsey, did you?
I think I elaborated enough.
Did you do well?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if I was clear on the PTR, but I will be for increasing that, as long as that money will go towards salary enhancements. And also, if someone starts this fall with their child, and they say, why is my fifth grade only two teachers instead of three? And the answer is, oh, the teachers got a raise, that answer better be a lot more clearer than that, I hopefully, to the public, as to they got a raise because they haven't gotten a raise in this many years, and a lot of other things.
Mr. Jones sent an email indicating what his cuts would be, and it pretty much mirrored mine, so I'll go with that. I think when Matthew Fenster comes up, Ventress comes up and says how exhausted he is, he's not blowing smoke, I understand that. And when Kim Dickerson comes up and says that she pays all her bills and pays for her house, and I'm surprised she owns her own house, to tell you the truth. And it's just really, it's the truth. We have taken care of buildings, we've taken care of programs, and now it's about time we took care of teachers. I would support their raise, and I'd try to give more if we could. We don't know what the state is going to do, but I would recommend that whatever the state does, it goes right into teacher salaries. I also feel that we need to, I agree with Sarah, and I also agree with Goonan, those programs that they mentioned, I will second that, so you don't have to rewrite it. As far as the PTR is concerned, I would have to ask Kelly, Kelly, how do teachers feel about getting a raise and having much larger classes? Do we know that? Have we listened to that? No? Okay. That's a concern of mine, because I'm listening to Matthew, who tells me how tired he is and how exhausted he is, and then we're going to say to him, okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll give you a few more bucks and five more kids. I don't know about that, I really don't. It concerns me, but I don't know what else to do. The state has put us into a situation that they don't care about. They just look at us and say, let me give you an example. Joseph Yost, who I like, I like this young man, and he and I are going to go trout fishing someday, but he sent out an email, he wanted to know how we felt about a particular item. And he gave a survey monkey that I could go into to look that up. So I went in there, and here's the answer I got. Your search did not match with any website that we have. And I'm thinking, was I sent out a wild goose chase? Is the state still playing games with us, or what? I just don't understand. And that's the type of stuff that just drives me crazy, when we've got a budget here, and we're struggling for every single nickel we can find, and the state sends out a survey and says, yeah, come on, join my survey, and then I can't do anything, and I've wasted all the time trying to do that. That's the state, as far as I'm concerned. Not necessarily Joe Yost, but the state. So anyway, I support you, Sarah, and I support you, Goonan, and I support much of what Penny said, except for the PTR. But I sure would like to hear what the teachers have to say about that, because that's crucial. Do we have a number, and maybe you've given it to us already, do we have a number of raising each class, one student? How much money that will save? Do we have that number?
I do, I just referred to, I just looked it up. One, an increase of one PTR would be the result of 22 positions, according to what you were giving.
Grades four through 12, and it's 1.4 million.
And it's four through 12, not including the middle school.
That's correct.
Well, it's a start.
Ms. Franklin?
No, 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 wait a minute. It's not a start. That started several years ago.
Let me finish.
This started several years ago.
Let me finish, and we'll go around again. The other thing is, everybody at the table said, let's look at the central office. Yes, we need to look at the central office. I don't understand why the teachers are taking the brunt constantly, and the central office stays the way it is. Anyway, that's where I'm coming from. There was one other item that I'll come back to later. I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin.
No, I was just reacting to, you know, it's a start. PTR has been going up for the last, I believe, four years? One student, one student, one student. And through attrition, we'll get rid of this many teachers. It doesn't work. You know, come on, put those two together, and you've got an overcrowded classroom with a teacher who is tired. And look at our numbers. There are some numbers showing in the district, the data shows, we're losing ground. We are losing ground on test scores and things that we're measured by as a district and by educators in this county. You just can't keep saying, one more, one more, one more. You can't keep doing it. And attrition, I hate that word. You know, I'm so sick of it.
I'm just curious, Ms. Franklin, with, I know your passion about the salary enhancements, where do you think that we can get the big dollar items to create that salary enhancement?
One, we need to look at central office, okay? And then, there are other things that are not on this list that we need to be looking at too? You know, so it can add up, it can add up.
To 2.3 million dollars?
Yeah, I believe we can, is if you take a hard look at everything that's going on in the district, you can add it up.
I think the superintendent's office is asking for some direction on where to go for some of that, so whatever those numbers are, or whatever line items you think those are, I think we need to make those suggestions.
You know, these are line items that are put out there in front of us. As far as I'm concerned, and again, like I said, these emails that keep flying around for this and that and whatever, we need to be having a discussion at the table about this stuff. And what I'm saying is, we do a special session with everything. I mean, if it takes us all day long to comb through what's going on in the district, and ask those questions right then and there, and have figures run, then that's what we need to be doing. Because there's a whole lot of stuff that's not in line 1 through 20, or line, get it, 1 through 30 something. There's a lot more than that in this district.
You mean, as far as public schools is concerned? I don't know what you're talking about.
Isn't that what we're talking about? Isn't that what we do here?
Yes, and that's what we're doing-
Why would I be talking about anything else?
Well, that's what we're doing at this table, and I don't understand why we would want a special meeting when we're doing that right now.
No, we're not. All we're doing is looking at what's put in front of us. What's put in front of us, and there's a whole lot more than 32 lines, 41 lines.
I think what Ms. Franklin is suggesting is that we see the entire budget in front of us at one time, and then go through it, comb through it. Are there items other than those that are suggested right here that we could eliminate, reduce, whatever?
I thought I was pretty clear with that.
And I agree with that, actually. I mean, that's one of my big struggles with some of this that we've been doing for the past several weeks. We've been looking at this list, but we're not looking at the whole thing. We got the, what was it, an 88-page document, you know, within the last couple of weeks. That's probably the document that we need to be looking at right now, combing through, are there things that we can take out of there?
I'd like to just make a comment, just for public record too, that, speaking about the raises, I mean, and appreciative of everything teachers do, but other staff members as well. I was at Christiansburg Middle School the other day, and I'll just tell you, I don't know how them ladies did it in the office that day. It was a zoo, was it not? And I will tell you what, they make half of what teachers do. And it was a zoo, a zoo. I don't know how those ladies took care of every student and parent, and the phone was ringing. I mean, I was just like this, the whole time I was there, and finally, I said, I'm out of here. I mean, it was just, and they did it with the utmost respect and smile on their face, and it was like that the whole time. It never stopped. And they listened to the fussing, and they listened to the parents, and they listened to the sick kids, and they listened, I mean, it was a zoo, and they did it phenomenally. And so, you know, I have to, I just got to throw that out there, those kudo people. I mean, you know, we can't forget, they make an impact on students' lives every single day as well, too. All day long, every day. And, you know, I sat in traffic yesterday morning, and I watched a school bus driver, and couldn't pay me enough money, couldn't pay me enough money, unless I was just desperate. But, well, just because, bless them, it takes a special person. And I watched that lady drive that bus, and she told those children to come across, and she hugged those kids, patted them on the back, and those kids couldn't wait to get on that bus and hug her. That's special. That's special. And I just publicly have to make sure, we don't forget those people too, because they make an impact on students' lives every day. And it was just, I just sat there and watched it and went, wow, I wish I could be like that, because that's big, that's huge.
Well, I have to say, I don't agree. Well, I have to say I don't agree, I don't think with Ms. Lines and Ms. Franklin's method of going through this budget detailed line by line of, in order to get the 3.9. I don't think that that would be a beneficial exercise. I think that would be an exhausting, I mean, I, I think the reason that we hire the staff that to come up with.
Okay, just a minute, Ms., Ms. Wilson has the floor.
We, we hired this staff that is a lot more educated and has the background to know how this school system should be funded and how it shouldn't. Doesn't mean that I agree with them since I, 30 minutes ago, I said some things that I didn't agree with. And that's how we respond instead of going line by line, detail, detail. I, I, as, on a school board level, that doesn't seem appropriate.
How many questions did we ask of you folks to answer approximately?
Thirty, 33, 35 questions, somewhere in the neighborhood on one document, but we got a, we got a repetition of, um, several questions there.
So somewhere around 35 questions?
Well, just to start with the doc.
And those questions.
That total composite, um, can you tell me better, um, when the, more like 40 something questions?
I'd say 35 to 40 total, would we reduce when we combine both documents and then remove the duplicates?
Well, what, what I'm hearing is that we've already asked 35 or 40 questions and I don't know what else, what other answers you want other than the answers you got from those 35 or 40 questions. I don't remember how many there were, but I read through all of those and I thought they were very good questions and I thought they answered a lot. As far as breaking this budget down further, that, that would be crazy. No.
That's what we're supposed to be doing. That's our job, to do the budget. And it's not just to sit here and look at what's put in front of us if we need more to do the budget.
Well, then, did you, is there more that you'd like? We, we can get that. What more do you want?
I said, we need to have a, if it takes all day, sit down, scrub through what we do in this district and figure out, other than these lines, what else we can do.
And my question is, what other lines are you asking for?
I said, look at the budget for the district. Everything, everything. I don't, I don't want to have lines put in front of me unless it's, everything in the district.
So you're asking, you want all the way down to the detail of how much toilet paper is spent at Shawton Middle School? I mean, that detail.
How much toilet paper is spent through the whole district? How's that? You know?
Well, and there's a difference. You can go all the way down or you're...
Well, I'm sure that they have it broken down that way and then there's a total. So it's not, you know, I'm not talking about being ridiculous and I think that would be ridiculous to even think that you would do something like that. But there are totals with the line items there and we need to be looking at that.
Ms. Drake, could you tell me where the document is that was sent out to us? I think it was about a week or a week and a half ago that had the 88-page breakdown of the entire budget. Which, where is that in our board docs so we can all maybe take a look at that? I don't remember exactly where it was.
I'm going to need a moment.
No, that's okay.
Well, she's looking, any other questions or comments?
I'm just going to throw this out there and I'm probably going to get a lot of arrows and, and oh, no, that can't happen and no, it shouldn't work, but I'd like to know how much a month is spent on 4G iPads for the whole district. I mean, that has got to be overwhelming for everybody to have 4G on their iPads. I mean, I'm not saying it's good, bad, or, I'm just saying it's got to be expensive.
Well, it is, I do, that is one of the line items. I do see our bill to Verizon when we, if you look through the, what we actually approve for, we're paying the bills, there are some pretty significant numbers there.
Absolutely.
To go back to something that I know will probably agitate Ms. Franklin, I'll use a different word. Uh, instead of attrition, I'll use the word turnover. Could we, uh, could you provide, uh, just me, because I'm new here, what are our numbers? What do we typically lose in this given school year total, um, through retirement, transfers, um, you know, not renewing a contract, whatever that is? Just kind of get maybe an average for the past couple of years so we know what, what number that actually could be should we go down that road?
I'm going to have, I'm going to go around the room again and I'm going to ask you to recap exactly what it is that you would like or not like so that we make sure that Dr. Sanders has a clear image of exactly what we're present. We're going to present something to the superintendent and it's going to be tonight. So with what we have right now, I would like each one of us to recap that. And let's, Ms. Wilson, let's start with you.
Um, I would like the salary enhancements of 2.352 million to be not on the budget reduction list. Um, I'm in favor of increasing PTR and I am in favor of reducing the field trip budget much greater than what is on this list here. Um, I would like to put on this budget list, the total amount for math enhancements and the math coaches of 127,600. Um, the elementary instructional specialists that we also hired with carryover money for 68,500. The website content management software for 50,000. And the academic and athletic stipends amount needs to increase and, um, the professional development travel can increase. I think that sums it up.
When you say increase, you mean to say that, um, it should be greater reductions?
Right. And our supply list can increase and then my comments on per, central office and I don't, I won't suggest where that should come from.
Say that again.
I won't suggest where that should come from. I'll leave that to the staff, central office.
Ms. Spines?
Okay, I do think I agree with the central office. Um, I can do, or I can entertain the, the thought of the half of the salary, um, half of the PTR, um, and see what that kind of does. Um, I'm for, not for taking anything else away from field trips. I am for taking everything away from the travel budget if that's needed for a year. Um, the summer school offering, I, you know, I know there are some students that, uh, have a rough year and use that, but I think it also gives way to some students not to take school year seriously because they know they can, uh, pick it up in summer school and I've heard that. So, um, I'm okay with, with leaving that in there and cutting that. Um, I don't, I'm okay with leaving the stipends cut at what they are, but I think if you start cutting more, then you're not going to have any coaches, you're not going to have anybody to do anything like that, which affects a lot of students and they learn in many different ways that way. Um, my iPad died, so I'm trying to see. Um, let's see here. I would like to see, like I said, some of the other things, like with Verizon, you know? I mean, what are some of the, the figures there and how could we, you know, maybe look at some of the plans or look at some of the things that we're doing in, in extra? I'm, I'm with Penny. There's so many things that if you don't work in the system, you don't know exactly what's on that budget and, and how we can save and how we can cost. And I'm a true believer, pennies make dollars. I see it every day in my business. I mean, if I have a rough week, well, I got to cut out dollar stuff. It's not, I know we got a big budget, but that's how you make your big budget is by the little numbers. That's what, that's what, you, you watch that and it's going to be okay. Um, and you can find money for other things. So that's where I am.
Go ahead. Go on.
I'd like to keep the salary increase and only reason I'm saying increase PTR because looking at what I have, and I looked at that 80-page document by the way, I really cannot see how we can come up with 4 million adding items that are 10,000, you know, how many items needs to be added, each 10,000 to add to, um, 3.9 million. That's why, only reason I am saying I am in favor of PTR because that comes to me as gives chunk of, chunk of saving, at least number wise, it looks that way. So that's why I don't mind increasing PTR because it gives 1.4 million, at least it is little toward that 2.3 million salary increase. Uh, I'm also in favor of field trips percentage can, uh, reduction can be increased. Athletic stipends and academic stipends, either 20% or we can look into even more reduction as long as equally distributed between athletic and academic and between the schools, not just from all middle school, all, all high school or all elementary school. Um, travel budgets can be cut or reduction can be increased more than 10. Uh, definitely central office savings. And when I come here to look at those line items, um, I believe that, or I trust that everything looked into and these items selected with, you know, um, such a way that those are the only ones plus or minus we can play around with. You know, I trust the central office staff and I trust the superintendent, I trust the assistant superintendents, so I believe that they're not, you know, cheating us on things that, you know, they're hiding there that we can come up with it. And we can look at the document, 80 pages document, we can look at the, every little item, but I don't feel, uh, you know, competent to judge on certain things, whether they are needed or not needed. I need a guidance from, uh, central office staff and that's why the reduction list to me, those are the ones I can help with. Um, but I'll be happy to work with the rest of the documents. Like I said, I looked at all those unless we really go, um, you know, go into details. And I read this article sent by a parent that on CNN, if you change the font size what you print, you actually save millions of dollars. So maybe that's what we should look into, change our font sizes, um, and, you know, save.
And a middle, a middle school kid came up with that solution too.
So I mean, there are obviously things that we will look into, but it's not just like seven of us should look into, it should be looked into as a whole county and as a whole school system and, uh, make an effort to, um, to come up with this 3.9 million. And I, you know, sympathize with salary increase and, uh, you know, my husband is a tech at, uh, professor at Virginia Tech. He makes less money than we moved 15 years ago. So it is, it is what it is in the state of Virginia, which is number seven richest and number 40-something in the education spending. So there's a problem really bigger than that seven of us can resolve sitting and just, you know, uh, playing with numbers, but that's what we of course have to do to come up with a balanced budget, but that's my.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Okay, well, I think you've heard what my solution would be, or at least an attempt. And if central office folks are offended by what I'm about to say, sorry, but I've been around here long enough and I have seen things that have not been put in front of this board for whatever reasons that needed to be in front of the board. And that's why I believe we need to be looking at that document and sitting down and going through it ourselves to see what's there, what's not there. Every last one of us has talked about central office. Central office wasn't put up in front of us, was it? No. Okay. So I am not in favor of cutting the salary, not in favor of raising PTR. Um, there are other things on here, but I'm not going to sit here and keep looking at this document that's put in front of me because that's what someone wants me to see. I, I can't, I can't do that. I can't keep just trusting in that and not us as a board having a conversation about what's actually being spent in this district. So that's where I'm at with it.
Ms. Spines?
Um, I just want, several things I just want to reiterate, uh, maybe a couple of things to throw back onto the table. Um, one of the suggestions that you made, Mr. Ivers, I definitely would like to hear what teachers think about raising PTRs versus a salary increase. I don't know if there's a way for us to gauge that in a short amount of time, but I would love to hear what teachers think about that. Whether that's some kind of just quick survey or we have all the teachers show up in two weeks at our next meeting. However, we need to hear that. I would like to get some feedback on that. I would like to explore the possibility, like I suggested earlier, if there's a way that we can have the PTR impact and the, uh, salary impact, if there's some way that we could formulate that to make that work. Um, I will echo what everyone else has said about the central office. We do need to see where our expenditures are there and, um, all across the board, personnel, what we're using, what we're doing, all of those different things. I do want to see that. I do want to say, I do have a certain level of trust with the staff who has made these recommendations with superintendent's office. This is in no way, shape or form a knock on them, but for us to look at the entire budget to me is a non-negotiable because it is our budget. And we sometimes, it would seem to me be approving things, we don't really know what we're approving. And so for us to sit down, and if it has to be a marathon session, it has to be a marathon session, we need to have ownership of this budget because it is ours. The seven of us who are elected officials to do this, it is our responsibility to know what's in that budget, to know why we spend it and to be able to back it up when we're asked questions. So for me, we have to do that in some way, shape or form. I do want to, uh, just, and this is kind of a side note, or emails that were flying around earlier today to Dr. State, and I do want to say, you don't have to worry about the whole property value thing versus appraised value. I got a little bit more education about that from Mr. Jones and it's satisfied my, what I, my curiosity. So just take that off the table.
Yes, sir.
The, um, I do, I think I've already said, I do want to know the numbers about the PTR, or I'm sorry, the, uh, the turnover issue. I do want to get that on there. And like I said, if we do need to go through the 88 pages, let's go through the 88 pages.
Thank you. The only, um, this is not for this year, but it's for next year. Mark Chabaka and Heather Cox have sent me emails and I hope they've sent other people emails in reference of a whole list of things that can be looked at in the future and I thought that was great. And, and we're at a point where we've got two people doing that. Wouldn't it be nice if we had 102 people doing that or 1,002? People out there, we just spoke about the young man who came up with, I think it was, he changed the font on his, on his, in his school and it saved hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's ideas out there somewhere and unfortunately, I don't know them, but other people do. And between Mark and Heather, we have a start. Um, I don't have anything to add to what's already been said because, uh, it would be redundant and time consuming. So, uh, my, uh, question to you, Dr. Sanders, do you have enough to work with?
I think you've given us, um, some pretty good guidance from...
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's time to move on.
Okay.
And I may be wrong, but I think you're finished. Uh, calendar, I'm sorry.
I got, yes, sir, yes, sir. Uh, the calendar of activities is the final item for, um, your review and it's been presented to you, uh, for your consideration.
Where am I? We're not, I've lost this thing.
Your unfinished business, Mr. Ivers.
Okay, the calendar is just for our consideration.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
Yes, I have some.
Okay.
It's the budget. And I would like to make a motion that this board go into a work session where we look at the entire budget. at the entire budget and see where we can find $4 million or at least a portion of that besides the 41 items that are put in front of us.
I'm willing to do it. I second it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
You want to do so now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just saying, just like you said, that's our job. I mean, we're supposed to do policy, hire the superintendent, hire the attorney, and the budget. And when it gets tough, then we need to be doing things that are out of the box, things that we haven't done before, to make sure that we are doing due diligence to this budget. And I don't believe that that's what's happening this year. And it may have not happened in other years too, but at some point you change things.
Any other questions or any other comments? I do have one. I am not going to agree with you to the fact that our administrators sent us what they want us to see, but I will agree with you that we are in sad straits and I think we need to expand our vision and take a look at what else is out there. So I would support your motion.
My one question might be, are we prepared as a staff to go through this right now and do this? That would be my only concern.
What do you mean by right now?
Well.
Not tonight.
Well, that's, that's what I asked, that's why I asked. You were saying to do it right now, that's what my question was.
No, no, no. We said a meeting is what I said.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to do it right now. I was, I was over here preparing myself.
Only at your pleasure.
I have to do one of those breaks, Mr. Ivers.
I was over here thinking about how I was going to lose sleep tonight.
Are you, are you amending the motion that we do it now?
No, no, no.
But we have a work session on the calendar for the 24th, all right?
Are we suggesting to do it then, or are we suggesting to add another meeting?
Add another meeting is what I say.
Okay, that's.
Because this is going to take time.
Would you clarify more about what would be going on during that meeting?
We'd be looking at the budget for Montgomery County.
Because this 80-page document that you're, that's been referred to, doesn't go down to the detail, I don't think that you're.
Well, then that's when we're sitting there and we're asking the questions. You know, we can start with the 80-page document, and I don't know about you, but whenever I look at something like that, it generates more questions.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm in support of it, absolutely. Have we already had a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, I think we'll have a show of hands.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Two opposed, the pass. Now we have to set a date.
Yes. Can I ask the question, how long it might take the staff to be ready to have that with their calendars?
Well, I really don't know the answer to that.
It's, it's, it's an 88-page document that's obviously already out there. Am I? No?
She's wanting more than that document.
No, she's not.
What I'm saying is that's a start.
Yeah.
And I may have 50 more questions once we get started in that, okay? So it's going to take time and commitment, which I mean, if we start at eight o'clock in the morning and we stop when we feel that we've got enough information.
Couldn't we look at that document on our own time and bring all those questions and line items to the meeting?
We've, we've been doing that for years, you know, bring it here, bring it here, bring it here, talk about it. And unless we're having that discussion among ourselves, then we just keep bringing items and it just keep going away.
When can we get that document?
It's been emailed to you.
I can't hear you.
I emailed it to you during the meeting, Mr. Ivers. I, it's a link. It's, I emailed you the link that Mr. Lyons requested.
So we already have?
While we were in the meeting. Yes, it should be at the top of your email.
Online.
So.
The way I said, we don't have much choice. If we're not, if we're not getting any more money anywhere and nobody wants to cut or change anything in the budget, what choice is there but to go back to some hidden something and try to pull questions out of it? I know, but I'm just saying for the ones that don't want it, what choice do we have?
Let's, let's talk about a date. Anybody want to make a suggestion on that?
How about next Tuesday? Starting at eight o'clock in the morning?
I won't be here.
Next Wednesday?
I won't be here next week at all.
Okay. Monday, the 14th.
The 15th would be better for me.
That's a school board meeting night, so.
Be here all day?
I'm sure to be here all day. Works for me.
Because we already planned for that meeting day anyway.
But that's an.
I am going to ask Ms. Franklin and, and the board members, but you asked me earlier how long it would take to get all that together. And I'm a little stumped on it because I really don't know exactly what you're looking for.
I don't either.
To bring forward.
Well, just, just let me, let me, let me help you with that. It's my understanding that Mr. Drake has already sent the document to us.
The document that Mr. Lyons is, was referring to, I believe what Dr. State is saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is he is not sure that that has the information that the board is requesting. I think that may be the disconnect.
Yeah, because when we're talking about that budget, it's a very extensive item and I don't think that 80-page document that, that's been referenced, covers all of that. And if you would recall, Ms. Blackburn has talked about this budget process being a year-round event. It is not something that could be taken lightly and educated on within a one, one-night session. So, you know, I've, I've been trying to hold my tongue. I don't speak out of, out of place.
Let me help you with this.
Okay.
I assumed, and maybe I assumed too much, that we were talking about the 80-plus page document. It turns out that we're not, is that correct?
If you're talking about an exhaustive look at a budget that a school system goes over, and we're talking about a $97 million budget, you can't, I, it's just incomprehensible to me to think that we could go through that.
Let me help you.
Okay.
I assumed we were doing, we were voting on the 80-page document. We're not. Am I correct?
No, I mean, when I asked the question about the total paper, she wants to know how much is.
Then I'm going to withdraw my vote because that's not what I voted on.
This is the most ridiculous thing that I've ever heard. I mean, how hard is it to start with that 80-page document and have folks available to answer questions? How hard is that?
We have the 80-page document, I believe.
I'm looking at it right now.
When we get home.
I'm trying to make an assessment on what I, if I think it would even be what we would need to look at. And at this point, I'm on page 37, and I have yet to see exactly what I think Ms. Franklin and I would want to see. And so maybe there is some more information that we're, we're going to have to have in order to look at that.
And my motion did not say that document. It just said we looked at the budget. We looked at what it's expended in this district.
And if, if I may, ma'am, it might understand that that's a lot, a line item review or a by-line item review of expenditures within the county, the county.
If that's what it takes.
Okay. Then I would go back to my earlier statement. If that's what we're looking at, that's an exhaustive review that, that's no way that you, I, in my assessment, that you can take in one night.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about one night. I'm talking about a day.
I believe it's a moot point. I've, I've withdrawn my vote because I misunderstood.
Because it's too much work, oh my God.
Because I, because I misunderstood what the vote was. So that makes it a 3-3 tie?
Technically, we have to move to reconsider the vote. The board would then have to vote on reconsidering the vote.
Okay.
And then we would vote again.
Okay.
That's the, I believe the technicality of it. Thank you very much, Nikki.
Do I have a motion for that?
I move to reconsider the vote. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
It fails.
It's too much.
As a board member, I think we have taken our central administration and stretched them as far as we possibly can. And for me to ask them to go out and find out where every nickel dime is that we're spending, we've got a school system to run, and, and I don't think that they can run the school system when they're catering to us.
Catering to the budget?
Excuse me.
Because it takes that money to run it, Joe.
Excuse me.
It takes that money to run it.
And, and I just can't, I, I have great trust in them. I, I would look at an 88-page or 80-page document. Mr. Lyons says it's not helpful. I'll look at it anyway, but I do not expect that, that our administration should have to go out and beat the bushes to find out exactly what every dollar is allocated for when we, when we've got them running a school system.
That's what, that's what we vote on every month. They have that information already. They don't have to beat bushes for it.
As far as I'm concerned, I don't ask for much. I've been on the board eight years, and it's rare that I've ever asked central office to do anything for me or any extra information. But I do agree with Penny, this, and what I'm looking for is what we pay our bills and we just kind of take for granted and say, yeah, we pay the bills because they've got to get paid. But when you sit down, when you've got to find money, and if, if we want raises, then we got to find some money, it's, it's, to me, it's a kind of a no-brainer. Then you look at where your bill money is going and okay, this is what our month's bills were last month. How can we make some savings? Here's 100,000, here's 100,000. Okay, can we save 30 out of that? Can we save 30 out of that? Can we save 30 out of this? I mean, that's budgeting in your home life, in your businesses. That's, that's how you do it.
We're looking for a date, and I'm not sure that we can sit and solid, solidify a date without.
We're not looking for a date, the motion didn't carry.
Remember, you changed your mind.
We don't need a date now. We're not looking for a date because the motion was changed.
But it didn't carry.
The motion failed because it was.
Failed. The motion failed, didn't it?
The motion to reconsider the vote failed. It was a tie, so it failed.
Right, so we are looking for a date.
I'm still confused.
The 3-3 tie is, is failure of the motion.
Failure of the motion to reconsider the vote?
Right.
Okay.
Because the, because we had already called the vote. You can change, so let, if Mr. Lyons places his vote, if I'm doing a roll call, and by the time I get to you, he wants to change it, he can do that. But once we've called the vote, motion carries or motion fails, it's final. We have to have a motion to reconsider the vote and then reconsider. But the motion to reconsider failed.
I see.
As I look over the document, it is a little bit more helpful than what I had initially anticipated, so it may be a place to start.
Okay, well, let's set a date, and I don't think we can at this point in time because Mr. Jones isn't here, and, and, and I don't think we should have this gathering without him or make, to make sure that we're all here.
I, I think we can set a couple of dates and then check to see if any of those dates work for him.
Okay. So you mentioned the 14th.
Mr. Jones doesn't return until April 15th.
Till the 15th?
In the evening.
Right. Your pleasure, board. What are we looking at?
I'll throw out April 22nd.
April 22nd? During the day, right?
Yes. And what about the 17th?
Can't do the 17th.
The 21st?
Can't do the 21st.
Did you say no on the 17th?
And 21st, I can't do either one of those.
No on the 21st?
23rd.
April 23rd?
I can't do the 23rd.
24th.
We have a school board meeting on that day. That matters.
Has to budget the workshop, yes.
Okay, so let's start it at eight o'clock. Maybe we'll end it up by nine. The 24th worked?
24th? So we've got the 22nd and the 24th available?
Is that going to work for you?
We all set with those two dates?
Yeah, I can make that work. I would prefer the 22nd if we could.
I would prefer the 22nd too.
The contingency is, Mr. Jones. Okay? Now if I can figure out where I am.
And can I ask when that communication goes to him? If neither one of those dates work for him, that he will give us a couple of dates? So that we're not sitting back and waiting to get back together to find more dates?
And do we talk about a time? Have we talked about a time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, 8:00 AM?
Eight, eight, yeah, 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM here in the work, workroom next to where?
We won't be able to determine a location until a date has been determined and then we'll have to investigate what rooms are available.
Okay.
We assume we'll be providing meals, so this will not be the place if we're going to do that.
Was that new business?
That was old business.
It was unfinished business, Mr. Ivers.
Pardon me?
It was unfinished business.
Okay, so. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Announcements and information?
I just have one. I had promised a parent in the Auburn community that was struggling, and I, I know how much teachers do this for all their students, but I did promise this parent that I would make a rec, just would make an acknowledgement of the teachers at Auburn Elementary of just how well that they supported his family in a time of need. Want to make sure I get that on the public record.
Okay. Upcoming school board?
I have one announcement.
I'm sorry.
As you suggested, I have to report.
Yes, thank, I'm sorry.
For the governor's school, couple of board meetings that I attended, and I wasn't sure that's an old business, like Mr. Jones suggested I should do it on old business, but I can do announcements too. They had November 2013 meeting, and at that time, since Virginia General Assembly allocated funds to encourage academic year governor's school programs to explore the feasibility of expansion. They received $100,000 for the feasibility, so they are looking into expansion of their programs. Either it's going to be longer days or, you know, including 10th grade instead of just 11th and 12th grade. And this time, at the February meeting, they said that they're going to start with, with county public schools because they are receiving grants, potential grants from their foundation of excellence. their foundation of excellence, and they, and the bigger contingency of the governor's school comes from the with county public schools, forty of the schools, forty students coming from there. So, they're going to have a pilot plan, and they're expanding for AP English and social studies classes for only twelfth and eleventh graders. So, they're not expanding the grade level yet, but they are expanding the subject matters. And at this time, there is no additional funding requested from participating schools, but I am sure in the coming budget year, they will be asking, I'm not sure amount of, you know, what will be the total amount, but they will ask additional funding for our county due. Right now, just the with county schools paying, and those kids can try, how it works, additional subjects. And the idea is putting together math and science with English and social studies, and helping kids writing, integrating science and math with English and social studies, and helping with their writing as they go improve math and science, so, that's where it's standing there. Two more, two more governor's school meetings, board meetings, one is on the twenty-second, that I will attend and see what else to be reported, I'll bring it to our board. That's all.
Thank you. Any other announcements or information? Upcoming school board meetings, you can see those, April fifteenth. And then, the twenty-fourth is a budget work session, and followed by a public hearing on proposed budget, April twenty-ninth. May sixth, approved final budget. And then, May twentieth, second board meeting of the month.
Just a question, real quick, if we were to have this meeting that we're planning, that we voted on tonight, if we are able to accomplish everything that we need to accomplish, that we were to accomplish on the twenty-fourth, do we, is there a possibility of eliminating that meeting?
The meeting on the twenty-ninth is a public hearing on the budget. We advertise those meetings ten days in advance. If you are going to cancel that meeting, we would need to do it probably by the fifteenth in order to retract the advertisement.
Okay, the twenty-fourth meeting, you're talking about, right?
No, she...
Twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth is a public hearing.
I'm talking about the twenty-fourth meeting.
I apologize, no.
I'm talking about the twenty-fourth meeting. If we accomplish everything that we need to accomplish in our marathon session, is it possible for us to then eliminate the twenty-fourth meeting? And what would we need to do to make that happen?
It's not a public hearing, so we don't have the, that specific ten-day notice requirement. We would still need to do a public advertisement of canceling the meeting, but it's not near the ordeal that canceling the...
Okay, we don't have to have a ten-day necessary...
It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Basically, we could change the time.
Which...
If, if the consensus of the board is that that special session would be held on the twenty-fourth, then yes, we could change the time of the meeting.
Okay.
So, the twenty-fourth is a maybe, what we're saying?
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, if we feel like that we can...
Accomplish what we need to do?
And I, if we were to have a meeting on the twenty-second, and we felt like we accomplished everything that we needed to that day, including what we need to do on the twenty-fourth, would that be too late?
No, the board has canceled meetings without the notice.
Okay, okay, so that could happen, then.
Okay.
I just have one concern, is that this is the meeting that we adopt the budget for public...
You would have to do that at the other one.
I'm sorry?
You would have to do that at the other meeting, adopt a budget for public hearing.
At the twenty, on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, well, at whatever meeting, it's the pleasure of the board.
We could do it at that meeting.
Right. My concern is making sure that we have, we do that at a time that the public is hearing that we're doing that. And if we're do, if we end up doing that at four o'clock in the afternoon, because we've done what we need to do, I don't think that would be appropriate for adopting a budget for a public hearing. So, even if we just came back at seven o'clock, if we were finished, and said, had our, this is what we've come up with, this is what we're putting forth, I believe that would be the appropriate thing to do.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Mr. Jones questioned the public hearing on the proposed budget on the twenty-ninth. He indicated that we already had a public hearing. Do we need another one?
I think he was referring to the twenty-fourth, is what he was saying, if I remember correctly.
He was referring to the twenty-ninth. The board has met the state statute for a public hearing on the budget. Mr. Jones was mentioning to the board that that statute has already been met.
Right.
But the board would have to take action to cancel the public hearing.
On the twenty-ninth?
On the twenty-ninth.
Right.
Right. And, and what we have been doing for the last several years is having two public hearings on the budget, because we wanted to make sure that the community had ample time to let us know what they were feeling about the budget. And I believe we need to carry through with that, if that's what we're advertising, that's what people are expecting us to do again.
Yeah, I do agree that we do need to continue to have the twenty-ninth meeting, public
Any other questions or comments about upcoming board meetings? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Oh, I wanted to make sure I had a clarification on, on the guidance that, in leaving and going forward, based on our request for direction, and there were several statements made from all the board members, and then we had the follow-on discussion with, based on Ms. Franklin's motion. So, having heard all of that, I want to make certain, moving forward, on the next day, as the staff and I reconvene tomorrow, is our directions clear to say that we should continue to massage this budget, based on the directions, or based on the information we heard prior to the motion, and then be prepared to present another reductions list to you? Or should we now wait and, for, for the work session, where then you will review the budget and make your own determinations?
I would like to suggest that the reduction list be reviewed again by the staff with the salary enhancement, so I would like to see the suggestions from the staff on how that salary enhancements would not be in that list, and balance the budget.
I agree with that, you know, we, while I do want us to look at the overall budget, again, I do want to say, I do trust the staff, and I do, we're going to lean upon them for not only information, but suggestions as well.
Okay, thank you. And let me be clear, I did not say it was a matter of not trusting, it's a matter of being here for a long time, okay? Take it forever, you, whatever you want that to mean.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?